Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 18th regular school committee meeting at 5:46 PM. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session for discussions regarding collective bargaining, strategies, and personnel issues.
Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. How do you vote, Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. We will be reconvening our public session at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 18, 2021 regular school committee meeting at 6:31 PM. Before I get to the announcement, I'm speaking rather loud tonight. I'm not sure if everyone's aware. It's not date night in here. We did lose power. A car struck a pole. We are being broadcast live, so I apologize if you're watching at home and it seems somewhat loud in here. We're trying to satisfy everyone where people can hear us in the auditorium and also hear us at home. So I would ask for your patience and honestly, probably more importantly, to just try to remain as quiet as we can. We have a lot of business to get to tonight. We have a lot of important business and the last thing that we want to do is not be able to have people hear either the deliberations which are taking place up here amongst us as members or members of the public to hear their fellow residents. So once again, I do apologize for the lighting. Certainly, we have no control over cars crashing into telephone poles and we're certainly happy that we're able to broadcast and have this meeting this evening. With that, the August 18, 2021 regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or at youtube/tuksberrytv.com. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please either identify himself or herself. Seeing none, I'm gonna wait another 30 seconds or a minute or so till everyone files in. And I'm gonna ask everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have no recognitions this evening nor do we have a student representative or a presentation. We're going to move right into Citizens Forum. I would just like to read our brief policy regarding Citizens Forum. Obviously, I think everyone knows why we're here this evening. Tuxbury has had a long, steep tradition of coming together over incredibly difficult decisions, whatever they may be, casino votes, mascots. We have always done so hand in hand. We have always done so respectfully and I certainly hope that tradition continues tonight. This public meeting is not an opportunity for people to come and question those policy or decision makers. It is your opportunity for you to actively watch and then see the deliberations that your government is going to provide tonight in front of you. With that, all regular and special meetings of the Tuxbury School Committee shall be open to the public. Executive sessions will be held as prescribed by statute. The school committee desires citizens of the district to attend its meetings so that we may become better acquainted with the operations and the program of our local public schools. In addition, the committee would like the opportunity to hear the wishes and ideas of the public. In order that all citizens who wish to be heard before the committee have a chance to be heard and to ensure the ability of the committee to conduct the district's business in an orderly manner, the following rules and procedures are adopted. One, at the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, individuals or group representatives will be invited to address the committee. The length of a public participation segment shall be determined by the chair. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. The presiding chair may permit extension of this time limit. Topics for discussion must be limited to those items on the Tuxbury School Committee meeting agenda for that evening. Improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Deflamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, the chair may have to terminate that person's privilege to address the committee. I ask that all remarks please be addressed through the chair. Speakers may offer objective criticism of the school operations and programs as concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any member of the school community. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. Written comments, long
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 18th, 2021 Regular School Committee Meeting at 6:31 PM. Excuse me, before I get to the announcement, I'm speaking rather loud tonight. I'm not sure if everyone's aware. It's not date night in here. We did lose power. A car struck a pole. We are being broadcast live. So I apologize if you're watching at home and it seems somewhat loud in here. We're trying to satisfy everyone where people can hear us in the auditorium and also hear us at home. So I would ask for your patience and honestly, probably more importantly, to just try to remain as quiet as we can. We have a lot of business to get to tonight. We have a lot of important business. And the last thing that we want to do is not be able to have people hear either the deliberations which are taking place up here amongst us as members or members of the public to hear their fellow residents. So once again, I do apologize for the lighting. Certainly, we have no control over cars crashing into telephone poles. And we're certainly happy that we're able to broadcast and have this meeting this evening. With that, the August 18th, 2021 Regular School Committee Meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or at youtube/tuksberrytv.com. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please either identify himself or herself. Seeing none, I'm gonna wait another 30 seconds or a minute or so till everyone files in. And I'm gonna ask everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have no recognitions this evening, nor do we have a student representative or a presentation. We're going to move right into Citizens Forum. I would just like to read our brief policy regarding Citizens Forum. Obviously, I think everyone knows why we're here this evening. Tuxbury's had a long, steep tradition of coming together over incredibly difficult decisions, whatever they may be, casino votes, mascots. We have always done so in hand in hand. We have always done so respectfully. And I certainly hope that tradition continues tonight. This public meeting is not an opportunity for people to come and question those policy or decision makers. It is your opportunity for you to actively watch and see the deliberations that your government is gonna provide tonight in front of you. With that, all regular and special meetings of the Tuxbury School Committee shall be open to the public. Executive sessions will be held as prescribed by statute. The school committee desires citizens of the district to attend its meetings so that we may become better acquainted with the operations and the program of our local public schools. In addition, the committee would like the opportunity to hear the wishes and ideas of the public. In order that all citizens who wish to be heard before the committee have a chance to be heard and to ensure the ability of the committee to conduct the district's business in an orderly manner, the following rules and procedures are adopted. One, at the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, individuals or group representatives will be invited to address the committee. The length of a public participation segment shall be determined by the chair. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. The presiding chair may permit extension of this time limit. Topics for discussion must be limited to those items on the Tuxbury School Committee meeting agenda for that evening. Improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Deflamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, the chair may have to terminate that person's privilege to address the committee. I ask that all remarks please be addressed through the chair. Speakers may offer objective criticism of the school operations and programs as concern them. But in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any member of the school community. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the committee before or after the meeting for the committee's review and consideration at an appropriate time. I would also like to acknowledge and thank the many residents that couldn't be here this evening that have reached out to myself and my fellow committee members with their input, one way or the other, their emails, their thoughtful letters, their response, their Youtubes, their blogs, whatever it may be. We certainly appreciate that input and I want to make sure everyone's clear that all of that input will be levied and weighed by all of us prior to whatever deliberations and decisions we make tonight. So with that, if anyone wishes to address the committee, now is your time to do so. Also, as a procedural matter, please state your name clearly and your address for the record.
Hello? Is it this one?
I'm not.
Can you hear me?
Nope.
Nope.
You might have to go off the mic.
All right. I can certainly do that. My name is Peter Foster. I'm at 156 Marshall Street. I'm a father of an incredible second grader son. And before I start, I just want to acknowledge all the parents that came here for whatever reason and whatever stance you have, I find it awesome that you're all here advocating for your children. So I just want to acknowledge that first. Given that, I'm almost dumbfounded that I have to stand up here at this point talking about this topic. For the entire school year, if the state required or even recommended a policy with regard to COVID, the district complied. If DESI recommended something, the district complied. We even went as far as to handle it as a requirement. Summer came around and the state recognized its overreach, repealed their mandates, DESI followed. You all followed the lead of the state and DESI and mandated nothing for summer camps in schools. I am now advocating, I'm not advocating for blindly following the requirements of the state organizations because God knows I don't agree with most of them. But I am pointing out a clear pattern of behavior. And what that, what that allowed was a summer void of mask mandates, distancing, isolation, but full of laughter, stress-free environment, smiles, hugs, social engagement, and many new friends. Now we're going into fall and both those state organizations still have not levied many requirements that existed last year, specifically masks. But our district has yet to come out and clearly adopt a mask recommendation framework, which would leave the choice with each individual family. Without a clear law or requirement from the state agencies, I'm struggling as to why this is the case. Why is there even a discussion? And I would just like to point out that parental choice was not an option to select on the survey that the district sent out earlier in the summer regarding masks. The only choices pertaining to masks were yes for unvaccinated, yes for all, or no. This was clearly done to confuse the community and limit their actual choices per the absence of any state requirement. Given that, those results should not be used to inform any decision one way or another. Speaking of state guidance, we have one of our very own school committee members who publicly advocated for, quote, "adopting district decisions surrounding opening to match state level guidance." Thank you, Mr. Parsons, for advocating for parents' choice to mask, for parental choice to mask or not mask our child. Now, before we get into why the school committee potentially has continued to, continued its pro-mask stance for the summer into fall, I wanted to remind everybody that Part 1, Title 10, Chapter 71, Section 37 of Massachusetts law defines the school committee's powers and duties as, "The school committee in each city and town and regional school district shall have the power to select and to terminate the superintendent, shall review and approve budgets for political or public education in the district, and shall establish educational goals and policies for schools in the district consistent with requirements of law and statewide goals and standards established by the Board of Education." So I'm struggling as to why we are here having this conversation since this topic is not covered under those powers or duties. Moving on though, could the position of this topic be delayed because our children might be at risk of COVID? No, that can't be. After all, according to our CDC, there have been zero Massachusetts COVID deaths in the ages of 0 to 17. You may think that this is a one-off, but in fact, only 354 children have succumbed to COVID of the 610,425 deaths across the country. Although all deaths are tragic, that's only 0.06% of all the nation's deaths with COVID listed on the death certificate. I wouldn't call that a substantial risk for children. Or could it be that we're concerned about them transmitting the disease to other vulnerable people? First, we know that, we know now that children are not vectors for this virus that we originally thought. Secondly, those people have the ability to get vaccinated and wear masks to protect themselves, don't they? So who are we protecting by potentially universally masking our children who are not at risk? I think it goes deeper than that. I think it's fear. Fear and hysteria have driven us for the last 18 months. The media, Massachusetts Teachers Union, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, all have no direct interest in the health or education of your child. Yet they continue to want to push their irrational fears onto our children because of their insecurities. Fear is the strongest human emotion there is. It is responsible for the fight or flight response. We have been in a never-ending state of fight or flight for over the last 18 months. Some people take on challenges by fighting and some people flee. Both can be valuable in certain situations, but what it looks like we have been doing through this whole ordeal is trying to make everyone take flight and run away. Not everybody takes on challenges that way. I know I don't. I have been and will continue to fight this thing. If we are going to start pigeonholing everybody into reacting to this situation the same way, we're gonna be in trouble. There have been contradictions from day one with the messaging, data communications, recommendations, and policies coming out of every agency top to bottom. Everyone is now so sure that unlike the original strain, the Delta variant will be doomsday for our children. People read on the news that CDC says Florida has seen 28,000 cases a day. But guess what? The CDC then corrected by the Florida Board of Health that they reported three days' worth of cases into one. Shady? Or the Texas, where the Texas Tribune reported that 5,800 kids have been hospitalized since the start of summer with this new Delta variant. Now, all I hear are people talking about increasing adolescent cases in the South. But it turns out that they misreported this figure and it was only 783, just a quiet retraction from the paper, but the fear is already irrationally set in. Damage done. You want to know why kids are actually getting sick? The cases of respiratory viruses called, such as RSV, are more prevalent now than it should be early in this season, earlier in the season. Why is that? It's actually not a shock to most doctors. It's due to kids largely being masked, isolated, and hidden from daily pathogens typically encountered by an everyday child. And we want to potentially continue this behavior. The fear is starting to push us back into our holes and make us flee. And now it is turning into a blame game. The notion that my health is everybody else's responsibility is not a healthy way to approach life. Any mental health professional will tell you that learning that you can't control everybody else's actions and words is essential for mental stability and clarity. Everyone else is not responsible for your health. You are responsible for your own health and the health of your family. Telling people how to handle this situation only causes division and exacerbates the problem. Speaking of health, what about the health effects that prolonged mask wearing have on our children? I'm assuming that you all know that universally requiring clothed and surgical masks in response to COVID is only authorized by emergency use authorization. The same EUA that is used for experimental vaccines and the PCR test that caused a lot of this hysteria. In order to be granted an EUA by the FDA, you have to demonstrate the risk of the device or drug outweigh the cost of not authorizing them. Guess how much money the NIH put towards studying the impacts of prolonged mask wearing on our children's physical, social, behavioral, and emotional health? You guessed it, $0. Can anyone here defend that having a child breathe in less oxygen and more carbon dioxide for six to eight hours a day is a good idea? Especially for someone that does not, especially for something that does not kill children and rarely requires treatment. What about the children's self-identity being eliminated? Their ability to achieve human-to-human connection? Since the NIH didn't want to understand these answers, we can look to other countries like Germany to give us this data. In a study with 25,000-plus masked children, it was found that 68% reported impairments. 60% irritability, 53% headaches, 50% difficult concentrating, 49% less happy, 44% reluctance to go to school, 42% malaise, 38% learning impairment, 37% drowsiness and fatigue. There are examples like this everywhere. Brown University just concluded a study which included 672 0- to 3-year-olds born before and during the pandemic. The study noted that a significant increase in stress, anxiety, and depression. Along with that, they noted a significant drop in IQ of these children from a range of 98.5 to 107.3 pre-pandemic down to 78.9 to 86.3 currently. This is clearly a risk, there is clearly a risk to the cures we are trying to force on our children. Now here we are, you all have a choice to make. Even though I think it's a fairly easy and straightforward choice, you still have to make it. You could choose to force everyone to handle challenge and fear in the same exact way and create a whole host of new problems, even when the problem you're trying to solve is not actually a problem for our children. Or you could choose to give the power to each individual child and family to take on this challenge in the way that best suits their physical, mental, and emotional health. Giving the people an option does not take anything away from anyone else, but rather provides more avenues to address the challenge. Seems like a simple choice. I think Ms. Garabedian said it best on the platform she ran on during her recent school committee elections. One of her top priorities was prioritizing social and emotional learning and supports. The only way to embrace this priority is to eliminate the mandated fear-based reality that masks cause for our children and continue the nurturing, loving, and stress-free environment that this summer afforded our children and our teachers. Do the right thing for our children. Let's stop using them as an excuse for our inactions. Be leaders like North Redding, Middlebrooke, Groton, Middleton, Taunton, Pembroke, and many others that have stood up for the choice of their children and families. Our children have suffered enough. Thank you.
Just a moment. Mr. Chair, I'd like to just mention my apologies to Mr. Foster. I was setting the timer, so I'm sorry that that went off during your speech.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, can you just verbally state if an extension is granted during public commentary?
Yeah, well, I was about, I'm getting there, first of all. Mr. Foster, do you speak on behalf of a group this evening?
No, sir.
Okay, well, we're going to have to, I thought I made it very clear, if you're gonna have an individual remarks, that's why the clerk has a three-minute timer. So I will ask when you come up, if you're speaking on behalf of a group, then you need to state you're speaking on behalf of a group. And can you please identify that? If you want to come up, certainly, I will sit here and listen to everyone's three minutes if need be, okay? But I don't think what we should be doing is everyone coming up and deciding now we're gonna, you know, take 10 minutes or we're gonna take five minutes or seven minutes. So we want people's input, but there's a lot of people here. We want everyone to have an opportunity that wants to get up and speak to do so. And we're gonna have to do that three minutes at a time unless you come up and identify that you are speaking on behalf of a group in accordance with our policy. Thank you.
All right, well, I'm gonna try to speak fast then.
Your name and address for the record, please?
Danielle Newell.
Thank you.
I stand before the school committee today as a mother of two children in Tuxbury Public Schools and one who will be entering next year. I am also a pediatric nurse at a large Boston hospital. I would like to note that anything I say tonight are not views expressed, are views expressed on my own and do not reflect the views of my employer. I am here tonight to express my hopes that the school committee will go in favor of optional masking of our children. In the past and currently, when I have expressed my position on optional masking and people know of my profession, I have often gotten the response, "Then you should know better." And my response to that is that I absolutely don't do know better. Last year during the surge on the pediatric unit I work on, it shut down and opened up to a COVID-only floor. So I am no stranger, nor am I ignorant to the seriousness of this virus. As we all know, by this point in the pandemic, people with comorbidities such as diabetes and hypertension, as well as old age, put them at a much higher risk for negative outcomes due to COVID. My experience as a pediatric nurse is that children and adolescents have 100% been adversely affected from this virus, but it is not because they are becoming physically ill. Depression, suicide, anxiety during the pandemic has led to an increased need for inpatient psychiatric hospitalizations. And it is, in my opinion, the mental health of our children during this pandemic has been downplayed and COVID-19 was highlighted as the public health crisis. But the other public health crisis is that children are suffering mentally. Per Dr. Kevin Churchwell of Boston Children's, quote, "The number of children, adolescents, and young people that have continued to present with behavioral, mental health issues are just totally off the charts." I would like to offer some data to put into perspective my opinion that children should be masked optionally. As of August 2021, there have been just over 4 million children diagnosed with COVID-19. And mind you, that per the AAP, quote, "Number of reported COVID-19 cases in children is likely an undercount because children's symptoms are often mild and they may not be tested for every illness," end quote. As of August 2021, states have reported 0% to 0.26% of all childhood COVID deaths, which is a total of 354 in the United States and 0 for Massachusetts. While one child death is too many and devastating, we are unfortunately not able to eliminate death from COVID-19 or any viral illness. Prior to the COVID-19 pandemic in 2019, the CDC estimated 42 million people were sick from the flu. Close to 650,000 hospitalized and 61,000 people died during the 2019 flu season. In 2009, 358 children died from the swine flu pandemic. But we did not require universal masking then, so my question is why? Why now do we think it is a good idea for our children to be masked for up to seven hours a day, five days a week? We must also be aware that some children wear the mask is no problem while some children do struggle. I can't tell you how many soaking-wet, soaking-wet cloth face masks my children handed to me when they got off the bus last year. Is this even sanitary? It is important, especially in our youngest of learners, that a facial expression can be seen, a quivering lip, a shy smile to a new friend. These are important parts of childhood development. Taking a quote from the Washington Post.
15 seconds, Mrs. Newell.
Excuse me?
15 seconds, please. Thank you.
The adverse developmental effects of requiring masks for a few weeks are probably minor. We can't say that with any confidence when the practice stretches on for months or years. I have a lot more to say, but I've gotta be done. I just want to say that the coronavirus will likely keep on mutating. We will likely continue to hear of newly found variants such as Delta. We must be careful on how much weight we give the media headlines and do our own research to make the decisions that are right for our community. I want to thank the school committee for the continued support of our students during the stressful time. I know that making these decisions do not come lightly and ask you to please consider and vote for the parental and student choice of wearing a mask.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Luckovich of 6 Sullivan Parkway. I am a parent of two children in Tuxbury. I'm not here to change anyone's mind about the effectiveness of masks. I'm here to ask you to allow people to make the best decisions for their children. Please, at most, align with the CDC and DESI guidance, which only recommends masks. Forced mask mandates have negatively impacted my children. I want to bring up a day early this last school year when I kissed my kids goodbye at drop-off. As I started to drive away, a teacher flagged me down to stop. My daughter ran to my car, hysterical. I asked her what was wrong. She said, "I walked in without my mask on. What if I get someone sick?" There's the mic.
Right.
"What if I get sick?" She's not one to break the rules at school and she was concerned there could be consequences. She responded to a simple, small mistake with extreme trauma caused by fear. It was at that moment, seeing the fear in my child's eyes, I realized the weight of psychological effects mandating this has on our kids. I never want my child to feel afraid at school, and that is exactly the environment that mandating all children must wear masks creates. Fast forward to today, we've had a wonderful, carefree summer filled with friends, family, parties, parks, movies, beaches, restaurants, cheerleading, trampoline parks, arcades, and all without masks. My kids have seen firsthand that without masks, they are not a danger to anyone, and they are not in danger. Please do not place this burden on our children. Thank you.
Thank you. But before we go forward, before we go forward, can we get Jason? I just want to check, it sounds like the power is up, Mr. Malone. I want, I want to make sure that. Could you just test that mic? Can you hear me?
Apparently it's working.
Mrs. Mancini, can you hear me?
Yes.
Through the microphone?
No, through the microphone.
No, no, through my microphone?
No.
Okay. Well, that's fine. I just want to make sure what the public saying a comment is not overbearing on the broadcast, Mr. Malone, that's all.
So you want to make sure we're speaking, it's not, is that too loud?
We're good. No, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
1098 Winkle Row.
Dana Mancini, 15 Sullivan Parkway.
We're speaking on behalf of the Tuxbury Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We submitted information to the school committee, which is available. If anybody reaches out to us by email, we can send that information to them. Recently, we asked our members for their feedback on COVID protocols as the school committee is deliberating on policies and procedures to keep our children safe. It's our role to advise the school committee on matters on matters pertaining to the health and safety of students with disabilities. We are not here to take a stance pro-mask or anti-mask, but we are here to share with you real concerns and comments from families of children with disabilities. We're not going to read the whole entire thing because it's really long, but we broke the responses up into categories. They are medically at-risk students, at-risk family members, risk of residential placement, transparent communication of cases and potential exposure, time out of school for quarantine, illness, or remote learning, method of instruction, speech and language, hearing, social skills, peer modeling, and sensory issues.
So as Maureen stated, we did, we did email this to our CPAC representatives, and this is available if anyone wants to read it. If you want to email us at tewksbrysepac@gmail.com. In general, many students are going to be struggling with anxiety because of many factors. Many haven't been in school regularly since March of 2020. Students are going to worry about getting sick. Students whose parents are against masks are going to worry about disappointing or upsetting their families if they do wear masks. Older students are going to worry about what other students will think of them if they do have a choice to wear masks, and if they do or if they don't. These are all real anxiety-provoking instances for all children. So as people who are advocating for children and their families, oh, all right, I'm going to use my assistant principal voice then, we'd like to see the schools focus on our students' mental health, social-emotional learning, and relationship building first and foremost. As parents, we don't want to hear about how behind our children are academically, nor should kids have the stress and worry about catching up. Let's focus on relationship building and social skills first. Academic skills are going to come in time. Not focusing on relationships and social skills will put academic skills in jeopardy due to behavior issues that will interfere with instruction. I'm going to go off-script a little bit. This is a stressful time to be a parent. You may be pro-mask, you may be against masks, worried about someone getting sick, worried about your kid's rights. So let's try to make sure our kids don't feel the stress so that they can focus on the fun parts of school, the relationship building and the activities, and they can also focus on the academics that will help them in life. So on behalf of the CPAC, thank you so much for your time. And again, if anyone would like to email us for our comments, it's tewksbrysepac@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Don Grass. I'm at Charlotte Road, Tewksbury. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, and I want to apologize, I'm not a public speaker. So just to give you a little idea where I'm coming from, my wife and I have six children. Five have already gone through the Tewksbury School System, and we have one that's going to be a senior this year. I'm coming from kind of a professional aspect of this. I was a firefighter in the town of Tewksbury for 34 years, 15 years as a lieutenant. I worked for the Department of Fire Services in the state of Massachusetts in the Department of Homeland Security as a hazardous materials technician. We train with all the government agencies, FBI, DEA, Coast Guard, Army, Air Force. We respond to terrorism events, chemical events, biological events, nuclear and radioactive. I've been doing this since 1985. I have accumulated two degrees, six certifications, and 29 years of continuing ed. So my information is based on hands-on. A lot of stuff we've done, people have never heard about because it just makes people nervous in general. I have dealt with and handled and operated PCR tests since 1995. They are highly inaccurate. I'll give you an example. North Shore package wrapped in several layers of cellophane, a tin foil found on a suspended ceiling in a North Shore motel. We ran the PCR test, two systems, four teams, side by side. We ran it through two times each. It came up as powdered milk. This is public knowledge, you can go right to the Department of Fire Services. We ran it again, came up as powdered milk. We went to some more extensive, more expensive equipment, ran it, and it came up as fentanyl. In 2015, we responded to a private home in the Merrimack Valley area for a possible lab, homemade lab. It was a 17-year-old boy who was pretty adept in chemicals and the computer. We ran PCR tests again. We ran it twice. We have a clean room system that we bring onsite. We ran it through twice, it came up as cornstarch. We upgraded the testing equipment, it was ricin. So we evaluate, as part of our team, PPE, protocols and procedures for the FDA, the CDC, Homeland Security, private companies like this, medical companies, Johns Hopkins, Mass General, and many colleges around here. So I never make decisions, people that know me, even my wife will tell you, God help them. I make all my decisions based on facts, numbers, science, not emotions because they get in the way and they confuse your decision-making. I also know running PCR tests, we ran one cycle each, and that was it. Because after one cycle, your chance of false positives greatly increases. If you run 25 cycles more, your false positives become 50% or greater. If you run it 35 to 45 cycles, your false positives become 90 to 93%. The CDC, who originally, up until 45 days ago, were running 40 cycles. And they did not have the live virus calibrated. The PCR test, too, in the beginning, they calibrated to common cold. The only reason I know some of this information is because working for Homeland Security and doing responses, we need to know.
Sir, you have 30 seconds, please. Thank you.
My training has taught me that none of what I hear and half of what I say. And I'm not asking you to take my word for it, I'm asking you to do the research on your own because there are too many factors that are not being considered and are not being put out there. I do know that the MIT called social distancing, it said six inches, six feet, doesn't matter. Harvard Medical School in May of this year came up and said mask. The title of their article was "Pandemic Theory." Stanford University backed that up. The University of Southern California also backed that up. And MIT, I mean, all these schools are pretty reputable, and some of the smartest people will come out of there. So we really need to put weight into these articles and information that's not being put out in the public.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Michael Edder. I'm at 67 Catamaran Road. I'm a dad of Julie. She's seven, she'll be going to the Dewing School. I'd like to start off by thanking all of you for your commitment and work that you do for our kids, your dedicating your time away from your families and friends for a small amount of money. And I appreciate that. I never thought I would have to come up here and speak, but common sense seems to have left the building. Please have common sense. Stop with the insanity of forcing masks. People have been wearing, having warning signs that say they don't even work. Like this mask I got the other day. Warning: Masks can filter out certain determinates, but it doesn't eliminate the risk of disease or infection. This is on their warning label. People wear these masks worse, but they still wear them. They don't work. If two years ago my daughter came into school and told you, "My parents forced me to wear a mask while sitting at the table for six hours", you would contact DCF immediately. Now we're forcing kids to wear masks. Think about that. My kid will not be wearing a mask at your school or any school. Your job is to provide in-person learning, period. All I want is a choice, but whether you allow me to have a choice or not, my kid will not be wearing a mask. Thank you.
Good evening. Leslie Rosetti, 682 South Street. My husband and I have two boys attending Heathford School this upcoming school year. As we prepare for the school reopening, we're wondering how normal this school year will be. Normal, I mean, will we continue to be provided the choice on masking our children as we have all summer long in the Tewksbury Public School programs? Our boys were fortunate to take part in the Penguin Pride program, which, for those who may not know, was a summer program offered by the Tewksbury Public Schools. This program ran from June through August, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Dewing School. There was no survey of the parents on whether masks should be required in the summer program. There were no temperature checks at the door, no COVID-19 questionnaires assigned, nor was there a mask requirement for the program. Masks were optional. They were a choice for children, teachers, aides, nurses, and staff alike. There were some children and staff who wore masks and others who didn't. Children were mostly indoors participating in morning meeting, indoor gym, art. They also had snack, lunch, playground activities, curious creatures, water play, visits to the library, visits to Strongwater Farm, a visit to the aquarium, and an end-of-season play within gym, packed, hot as can possibly be cafeteria, mask optional at all locations and during all of these events. The program staff kindly shared a summer video of our children's experiences. The smiles and expressions on our children's faces highlighted what was missing in the classroom when faces were covered up, the power of facial expression. In addition to the apparent dangers of masks being for long periods of time and their inability to stop the spread of viruses as stated on any box, when masks are worn, children are losing a great deal of information that is communicated visually and is paramount to their growth, development, education, and enrichment. Children are not able to tell the difference in emotion, nor are they able to glean the power of articulation. They struggle to understand one another because words and sounds are muddled. They become frustrated, non-harcisatic, and introverted. Having masks be optional is critical to my family, as we have a child with delayed speech. Requiring him to wear a mask has only exacerbated his speech development as it has restricted the movement of his mouth and tongue with the mask always going into his mouth as he attempts to speak and frame his words. Wearing the mask has impacted speech so much that in the recent annual disco, the doctor noted he has fallen behind in speech considerably since the year before. Given the CDC and DESI guidance, members of the school committee and administration, this is a powerful position for us to be in. Everyone exercise choice over the summer, our children, our teachers, our aides, our nurses, our staff, in and out of our school buildings, the same school buildings that will welcome our children, teachers, nurses, and staff two weeks from today. I remain optimistic that the school committee and administration will continue to provide for preventive choice and as it's done with the Tewksbury Public School provided programs. After all, there has been no data on children under the age of 12 in the town of Tewksbury, no evidence and no reason why the optional mask policy should change. Choice has worked. Choice has provided opportunity for everything, for everyone to do what they felt comfortable, and choice has been mutually respected. Nothing has changed, and neither should choice. I can't even imagine that it would, but if the practice is changing, where optional masking is not the path forward, I ask you to please provide information and evidence surrounding the drivers of the change. Please disclose the current number of COVID-19 cases in children under the age of 12 in the town of Tewksbury and how that data was collected. What is the science supporting the change?
We have 10 seconds, please, ma'am. Thank you.
For those of you with children, I hope you would agree with me that the choice to mask or not mask our child should be ours and not somebody else's. Just because the person next to me would feel more comfortable if my child wore a mask is not reason enough to warn my child, to warn that my child should be masked and nor should that person be allowed to make a decision for my children. The choice should be mine and mine alone, and it should be respected. Let's flip the script. You would likely not mandate that masks not be allowed in schools as that just wouldn't be fair to those parents who felt more comfortable sending their children to school with masks. So why would we mandate that masks be required and make it unfair to those who want the choice to send their children to school with no masks? Quite simply, masks should not be mandated nor required. They should be a choice. We trust you will continue to support and encourage choice and to do what is right for our children as we prepare to enter the new school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is April McCurry. I live at 2H Sharon Street in Tewksbury. I have a PhD in cellular and molecular biology from Brandeis University. I have also worked for the past five-plus years at a biotech company where I have worked extensively with the bench. I say this to give you an idea of my background and expertise. Additionally, I'm a wife and a mother. I have a young elementary school child here in Tewksbury. I came here today to care very deeply about the safety of children as they attend school this fall, as well as for the safety of faculty, staff, and families of everyone in our school buildings. Thankfully, with all the communication efforts you and your colleagues put into place this past year, there were a limited number of COVID-19 cases in school. I'm hoping that we can live with however many cases we see this upcoming year as well. Unfortunately, we're still dealing with the pandemic, and we still have the vast majority of children unvaccinated. Many because they simply are not able to be at this time. The Delta variant is highly prevalent in Massachusetts, and it will continue to spread faster than previous variants last year. I agree with the recommendations of the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, as well as other institutions, that masks should be required of all individuals in school buildings this coming year. The recommendation from DESI and TPH saying that masks are strongly recommended is sadly not enough. It is not enough to prevent the spread of this far more infectious and dangerous variant. Masks need to be mandatory, or we will see classroom and school closures. The Delta variant is 200% more transmissible. Every infected person is now infecting six to 10 more people as opposed to about three last year. How is this variant affecting children? I'd like to share some statistics with you. As of July 22nd, over 4.1 million pediatric COVID cases have been recorded. In 23 states that we have data for so far, over 16,878 children have been hospitalized for COVID-19, and that number is increasing every day. About 2% of children with COVID end up needing hospitalization. Just last week alone, 1,902 children were hospitalized for COVID. As of July 31st of this year, 4,404 cases of missing have been linked to COVID-19. Over 400 children have died of COVID-19 so far, being one of those between March and July of this year. Although some might say that it's rare that these extreme consequences occur in children, I would say that while it's true that they are less effective than adults, no child should ever be a number and a statistic, especially when it is preventable. And yes, these dire cases are also happening for children who are quite healthy and have no comorbidities. This has been documented again and again. I'm even more concerned about the more common consequences of long COVID, where children can suffer with symptoms for months and not be the only child that their parents once knew. One study reported that 78% of kids suffer from long COVID, which has been shown to affect the brain, heart, lungs, bones, and other organ systems. This has the potential to touch every single classroom in some way this coming year. How do we prevent these consequences? Masks, physical distancing, and increased ventilation is helping a lower rate of transmission for the community. These approaches, especially mandatory masking, are now becoming even more critical. We are seeing the effects of this in real time in many other states in the country with pediatric ICUs filling up. We also now have clear evidence that people, including children, whether vaccinated or not, whether they are showing symptoms or not, can carry SARS-CoV-2 and spread it to others. Although vaccinated individuals thankfully spread the virus at a lower rate, the Delta variant's infectiousness will absolutely lead to many COVID cases this school year if a mask mandate is not in place.
30 seconds, ma'am, please. Thank you.
I am just going to finish off and say that I strongly urge you to heed the advice, expertise, and evidence-based consensus of thousands of scientists, epidemiologists, and medical professionals, including members of the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, to limit the number of COVID cases, long-term problems, and worse this year. Please maintain mask mandates for everyone attending school this fall.
Thank you.
I don't like microphones, my voice is loud enough.
Great.
Thank you, U.S. Army. Eric Campbell, 125 North Millar Road. I too am a molecular biologist. I've played with viruses for 30 years. I had the distinct pleasure of playing with SARS-coronavirus back in 2003. I did not wear this mask when I was playing with it. I wore what is called an N100 mask. An N100 mask is a Class II medical device that is regulated by the FDA under 42 CFR 84, I believe, which regulates respiratory masks. An N100 mask will stop 99.97% of particulates down to 0.3 micron. That's 300 nanometers, that is big enough to stop any virus. This is what is called an N0 mask. It will stop nothing. This mask- The virus rides around on five micron or smaller aerosol. It goes around this mask, it goes through the mask. This is not a Class II regulated device under the FDA regulations. That's all I'm hearing.
It is Sean Carr, 9 Catamaran Road. I'm actually here for my children. One of the things that kind of pushed me over the edge was when I told my daughter Lillian that she was going to have- Lillian that she was going to have to possibly wear a mask, and when she screamed "No!" in the living room, I couldn't help myself. I'm sorry, everyone has a kid, everyone has a fear, but for her, the emotion behind not being able to see her friends for the last 16 months... She is a bright, outgoing girl. This has affected her in ways... I mean, everyone has medical advice, everyone has therapeutic means, everyone's got plenty to present on both sides of this argument. The bottom line to me in this argument is freedom. We should all be able to decide for ourselves what works for us. I believe you guys care about our concerns, and I appreciate that you are here, working on behalf of us. I can't imagine what it's like to be listening, and the judge and jury are people who have medical evidence on the left, medical evidence on the right. I can't imagine what it's like to make that decision, but what I can imagine is the solution forward. Each side has legitimate rights, legitimate fears. Set that aside. Give everybody the freedom. We have the technology already in place. If a teacher does not want to teach inside a class, they can teach remotely from home. Let the kids decide if they want to go to school with a mask. Let a kid who's afraid or in danger decide to learn from home. We have this infrastructure in place already. Let's start talking about solutions. Try it. What do we have to lose? I'll tell you, it's freedom. We have our freedom to lose. There are solutions. We argue about who's right. Where is the argument going to end? Let's yield the charge. Let's try it. We've got nothing to lose. If you're worried about the infrastructure of the internet being too weak, which was one of the reasons why we did a bi-weekly situation, focus your resources on making the internet and video capabilities be able to stream for those that are uncomfortable stronger. You can give everybody a choice. The technology's there, we just have to be willing to move forward towards a solution. And please, don't sacrifice our freedoms over fear. There are solutions, and I believe we've already got them in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angela DeLucca. I'm at North Street in Tewksbury. I have two children in the school system, and I just wanted to add on to the last topic of freedom of choice. Simply put, I will not speak as eloquently as some of these people, but as an example, I had my own husband with cancer. He chose immunotherapeutic drugs. It caused more cancer. He's dead. I have another relative, chose the same immunotherapeutic drug. Doing wonderful. Four years later, it's just about choice. It's going to work for some, it's not going to work for others. One of us is going to get sick, another one doesn't. You and I standing next to the person with the same disease, one of us might get it, one of us might not. It's that simple. It's about choice. I have roadblocks all summer. The kids were not wearing masks. We're fine. I'm fine. Their choice. My children got sick this summer, not COVID, but that's different, COVID. My pediatrician actually said, you know, it's really sad that we have these masks on all year. Their, you know, systems are compromised. They're getting sick from other things. So at least you can build on that, freedom of choice, that's all I'm asking. It'll work for who needs to work for. It'll work for everybody. If you're scared, you want to take that cancer drug, risk dying, go ahead. You're scared, you want to take that cancer drug, risk dying, you live free. This is our choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Joyce, and I live at 40 Warren Drive in Tewksbury. My children have graduated from school. The only children I have in school now are the special ed students that I work with at the Wood Middle School. Since we've been unmasked, I've been sick four times. I now have bronchitis, and I have not been around any sick people. So to me, I feel that all that time that we were masked, granted, our immune systems may have been weakened, but nobody was sick. So to me, the masks work. My biggest fear, and I understand how you all feel about your children being masked, because I've watched the kids walk and come out of a classroom at the Wood Middle School and have to walk circles to go to the next class. It's reminiscent of the Pink Floyd movie, The Wall, of people just marching with no reaction, and it was very sad. But the students I work with are medically compromised, some. And I do not think that I could handle losing a student to COVID. And I'm trying to understand the parents here, and I'd rather sit here and think about all the lives that were saved, because we're not going to know the lives that were saved by wearing masks. We're only going to know the lives that were lost by not wearing masks. And I understand children don't want to wear masks. Children don't want to do a lot of things. But I feel that we, as parents, it's our job to keep our children safe, our grandparents that we take our children to go see who may be medically compromised as well, anybody in the family battling cancer. I mean, this is a difficult decision that has to be made, and I would not want to be this panel making the decision. But to me, it is clear that the masks work, and it kept everybody safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Emoleen Graham, 6 Charlotte Road. I'm speaking to you as a concerned mother of a high school child that I have seen her behavior decline, her social interaction, due to having to wear a mask. This past year and a half has been hard on everyone, especially our kids. It is disheartening for me and many other parents to see our kids, although from fun-loving happy-go-lucky kids to being afraid. Afraid if they don't follow along and wear a mask, it will upset the adults in authority and be looked upon as being disobedient. What really made me mad was watching my child and others play sports with masks without any accommodations or changes to the sport. I had to eventually stop going to see my child play because I wasn't enjoying the game, and watching these girls run up and down the field with the same length with less players wearing a mask, and some of them not being able to catch their breath. After speaking with several Tewksbury parents, it became apparent I was not alone in my frustration of the possibility of not having the choice whether to mask my child up or not this coming school year. Even our own governor would not mandate masks, but left it out to individual communities to decide. That must tell us something. Common sense, numerous reports and studies have now confirmed adverse effects of masking children not only include a hindrance of often learning conditions and positive social development, but also headaches, fatigue, nauseous, cognitive impairment, and asphyxiation. Research informs us that masks often becomes a breeding ground for bacteria and fungi, which can undermine mucosal viral immunity. Simply put, masking, the retention and collection of naturally expelled waste and dangerous pathogens held close to the body's earwaves for consecutive hours, several days a week, will injure our kids. I am asking each of you on this board to make masking an individual family choice and not a one-size-fits-all solution. Thank you.
Good evening, folks. I just need 10 seconds to point out. My name's Michael Dingivon. I live at 61 Morrison Street here in Tewksbury.
Thank you.
I'm saying this as politely as possible, and I mean no hard feelings to anyone. I just wanted to make a point that a previous speaker that has an active case of bronchitis was telling us that masks work, was not wearing a mask. I yield my time. Thank you for your time.
Could we hold on there, Mrs.? Just, sir, for one second. We're not here to comment on other people's comments, please. As I said earlier, we want to hear from everyone, but please, if you have a comment, can you please address it through the chair? Thank you very much.
Hi, Erin Hud, 67 Catamount Road. I'm here to talk about my child's experience with masking in school. My seven-year-old went from being a vibrant, talkative, outgoing kindergartner who couldn't wait to go to school every day, to being a very shy, timid first grader who told me every day that she did not want to go to school. She complained of headaches and said she didn't like to ask questions in class because it was hard for her to get her words out because of her mask, and they would not let her remove the mask to ask a question. One day, my daughter came home and told me that her favorite part of her school day was when she got to go to the bathroom with her friend, and they can take off their masks for a few minutes and talk to each other. The highlight of my child's school day was to go to the bathroom for two minutes. What are we doing to our children? If your child can wear a mask for seven hours and be fine, that's great. I'm happy for that child. But my child doesn't do well, and these masks should not be forced on children. All we are asking for is parental choice, so I get to make the best decision for my child's needs. You don't get to force my child to wear a useless piece of cloth over her face because it makes you feel safe. It should not be the goal for the school committee to remove any and all risk from a classroom. I think we need to be honest about the purpose of masking. Masks are not to keep children safe. Children are already safe from COVID. You've heard tons of stats on that tonight. In fact, an unvaccinated child is at less risk for severe COVID than a vaccinated adult. That is a fact. The masks aren't to keep the adults safe either. They're already safe. They can get vaccinated if they want to be. Adults who want masking do it to make themselves feel better. It's nothing more than a security blanket. Risk of illness has always been there for children in schools, and the risk will always be there. We can't hide from this virus that's here to stay. Where there are risks, there must be parental choice. And the last thing I want to say is really to the parents, the people listening, the parents in here, the parents that are here this recording, make no mistake about it, if we don't get these masks off of our children now, this year, they will never come off until the government sticks a needle in their arm. The MTA already came out today and said they want mandated vaccines for staff and students, and they are using these masks to bribe you and your children to get this vaccine. They're coming for our children with this vaccine, and they're using the mask to do it. The time to fight this is now, and we say, no more masks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the committee. My name is Michael Vines. I live at 65 Birchwood Road.
Road.
Thank you. I'm not... I'm not opposed to having people send their kids with masks, but I will certainly not do it myself. I've heard a lot of facts and opinions today. I hope that it helps you be informed to make the decisions that you're about to make, but I'd also like to offer an expert. This won't take very long, so I may have to run it twice. It may come in from the middle of the output. Obviously, we have bandwidth issues here.
Right now, people should not... There's no reason to be walking around with a mask. When you're in the middle of an outbreak, wearing a mask might make people feel a little bit better, and it might even block a droplet, but it's not providing the perfect protection that people think that it is. And often, there are unintended consequences. People keep fiddling with the mask, and they keep touching their face. Right now, people should not be walking... There's no reason to be walking around with a mask. When you're in the middle of an outbreak, wearing a mask might make people feel a little bit better, and it might even block a droplet, but it's not providing the perfect protection that people think that it is. And often, there are unintended consequences. People keep fiddling with the mask, and they keep touching their face.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen McLaren. I live on Sesame Street. I have three kids in the school system and one at the tech. I just wanted to point out, I may not have data, but I know I ended up with COVID in January. Not one of my kids, I'm a single mom, not one of my kids ended up with COVID. Two are in elementary, one's in high school. My child that was at the tech ended up with COVID in June. Again, not one of them ended up with COVID. So I agree with Angela. I could be standing next to somebody with COVID, does not mean I'm going to get it. I feel that it should be a parent's choice, on whether or not to mask. I know there's a lot of debate going back and forth. So put it, if you want to gamble with your child's life, have not wear a mask. We gamble every time we block out of the house. We could be driving down the street, getting a car accident. Does that mean we're not going to drive? No. We could be at the park, our kid could break his arm. We not going to go to the park because of the freak accident? No. It should be a parent's choice at the end of the day. As a bus driver for two years, the biggest thing I had to say all year, Joey, pull your mask up. Pull your mask up. Instead of, oh, what'd you guys do in school today? Having conversations to get them from A to B? That was my conversation the whole time during school. And I don't know if anybody else has. I can speak from a bus driver. I can only imagine in schools, being on a bus with a mask in 90-degree weather is not good for them, especially I have a child with asthma. The mask is going to make it even worse. It should be a parent's choice. Bottom line, period. That's all I wanted to say, that I can get COVID, my kids didn't get it. It should be a parent's choice, no matter the data. Everybody's going to have the difference at the end of opinion, but at the end of the day, it's a choice. That's all.
Thank you.
My name is Rob Hanley. I live at 2 Hillcrest Road. I have an eight-year-old that's going to third grade this year at the North Street. I'm here today to oppose any potential mask mandate for Tewksbury Public Schools. Parents should decide whether or not their child wears a mask. The people who have spoken out against the mask mandates have brought up excellent points with scientific data to support those points, and yet, I can't help but feel like I stand before you now as a defendant in a public trial. And in some ways, I am a defendant. Over the past 18 months, many of us have been forced to provide a defense for ideas that were considered fundamental and obvious for decades in this country. Here are a few examples of ideas that I find myself having to defend. Children learn best when they are active and engaged in a classroom environment with their peers. Too much screen time can produce negative outcomes in a child's development. Socializing children at early ages is incredibly important. Isolating children often results in mental health issues such as depression. Understanding nonverbal cues such as facial expressions are critical to the social and emotional development of children and is crucial and beneficial to the development of verbal communication. The collective health and well-being of the young shall never be sacrificed for the health and well-being of the old and elderly, the youth are the most valuable commodity in any moral and prosperous society. Munchausen by proxy or exaggerating a child's risk to death or disease in order to instill fear and gain attention is a form of child abuse. A child's innocence is priceless, is a priceless blessing, and should be preserved as much as humanly possible. We're consistently asked to provide a defense as well as data in order to oppose new... We're consistently asked to provide a defense as well as data in order to oppose new-fangled requirements and mandates based on anecdotal evidence, personal feelings, studies that have not been peer-reviewed, or are incomplete, and an endless line of what-ifs. At the same time, the side that wishes to introduce all of these requirements are not expected or compelled to provide robust data-backed arguments for why they feel they have the right to introduce mandates as well as forced compliance. The 2018 school year should be viewed as the baseline for how we educate and treat our children in public schools from this point on. It was not perfect, but there was a certain understanding that we arrived there as a result of centuries of trial and error, collective human knowledge, and sacrifice. Over the last two years, many people feel the need to dispense with all of that because they are scared or because they feel that they know better. To those of you that feel that way, I am here to tell you that your fears do not dictate my reality and that you do not know better. Having to defend fundamental American ideas like the primacy of the individual and the importance of free speech is only making us stronger and more formidable. We believe that every individual is significantly and meaningfully unique. We believe that every law-abiding parent deserves agency over their own lives and the lives of their children. There are many people in this community that feel the same way but have yet to express it publicly. If you're one of those people, feel free to reach out. We will not be ignored. We will not be easily dismissed as a nuisance. We will not live in fear. We will respect the ideas and tenants that have made this such a great community and country, and most importantly, we will continue to fight for a parent's right to choose what is best for their child. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 65 Birchwood Road. I appreciate the opportunity the school committee is giving us to share our thoughts. I'm a Tewksbury parent of a 12 and a 15-year-old. I can't believe that I'm living in a state that is recognized as the birthplace of freedom and that I need to find myself showing up at a school committee to advocate for the right of our children to breathe unrestricted pure oxygen, having to take a stand against the MTA union who think that they have the right to make medical decisions for our families. Many people come to this country seeking freedom, and some risk losing everything that they have in order to escape tyrannical rule and oppressive nature of countries that want to enforce such policies on their citizens. If you haven't seen this in the news, look at Afghanistan. I still cannot believe after the horrific situation when our children's education came to a near standstill last year that we now have to fight for our children to be educated without wearing a useless piece of cloth or paper strapped to their faces. Last year, our schoolchildren lost so much progress, time with friends, and bonding with their teachers. By perpetuating this fear-based narrative, we're teaching children that they and everyone breathing around them are a toxic biohazard, but this is not the case. Children interacting with masked teachers and one another are experiencing blank, expressionless faces. They cannot communicate properly or effectively with people because they're missing out on facial feedback. Our children are behind academically already, and now to make matters worse, many are facing depression and anxiety due to fear and social isolation. Our kids need interaction with people in a normal setting. We citizens are fed up and tired. We've had enough of state, town, and educational officials and teachers' unions forcing its constituents to quote "choose specific dictated medical decisions." Officials expect Americans to blindly and mindlessly follow what some politician decides or risk losing their jobs. They force our children to lose access to their education and access to fresh air because these people have a different opinion about managing their own health. People are so blinded by fear that they are uncomfortable in trusting their children, their health decisions, and their freedom to every politician and organization that has something to say. I personally know many people who are fleeing Massachusetts and New England states in large numbers for states that will allow the practice of freedom, choice, and the constitutional God-given rights granted to us as American citizens. People want to live where they can be free to make their own decisions for their families rather than having others decide what is best for them. Families continue to pull their children out of public schools in record numbers to avoid the mandates and decisions that are being perpetrated on our families and our smallest children. At what point are we going to decide to start living our lives and moving forward as a community? This is a real question, given the current system of moving the goalposts to try to drive compliance.
30 seconds, please, Mrs. Vines. Thank you.
I exercise the right and freedom to own a car, and I choose to drive it, and I take the risk of potentially being in an accident, but I don't demand that other people give up their vehicles to protect me. I don't demand that you share your personal influenza or vaccination status or anything else. I ask you today to consider the duty upon you to do what is best for our children, what is aligned with our basic freedoms as Americans. Despite what is happening in our country at the moment, I don't believe that the government has yet changed into a communist regime that has the power to force my family into doing something that violates our constitutional rights. I ask you for our right to vote, I ask you to vote for our right to choose. Vote for parents to make their own decisions for their most precious, beloved part of their lives, their children. If another family makes the choice to wear a mask, let that be their right. Let their decision be for their children. Let them choose what is best for them and their own home. We respect their choice and freedom to choose. Likewise, please respect ours. Personal health choices as mask-wearing are about my body and my business. My husband and I are full-grown and highly educated adults. We've got this. We don't need any outside agencies mandating masks on our family's faces, especially not the MTA or the school committee. Please stop trying to enforce fear and removing the freedom of choice for citizens who pay taxes to run our schools. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julie Gonzalez. I live on Bryan Lane. I had good reason not to speak tonight, and I decided earlier I wasn't coming. I have two good reasons. Well, one is that my husband's been in the hospital for the past three weeks, and hearing this, you know, I realize more and more as I prepared all these clinical trial data studies, all about the ineffectiveness of masks and how COVID is not a risk to our children, and I realized this is really about freedom. So I'm not going to share those statistics. You guys have that. But this is about freedom. So as I said, my husband's been in the hospital three weeks, and our eight-year-old daughter, very sweet little girl, she's not a fighter, she likes to play with her dolls, but she hasn't been able to visit him, no one under 18 because of COVID, not even with a mask. And she literally said to me, Mom, I'm going to beat up and blind those doctors because I want to see my daddy. And you see, we taught her, well, her dad taught her self-defense because there's a small chance, you know, that an older boy could bully her, an adult could try and abduct her, so she knows how to get at somebody should she ever be hurt. But we don't lock her in the house because of that. And so I saw him yesterday, and I was shook up, and I didn't think I could go anywhere today. And he's going to be all right, but God forbid, he wasn't able to come home with me. Who are they for deciding that my child can't go visit her father? Where do we draw the line? How do I, how come I don't get to make these choices for my child? If she's not at risk and she's not a super-spreeder, why can't she go see her dad? Why can't she be at summer camp all summer, playing with kids outside, and then have to turn around and put a mask on to go in school? The second reason I wasn't going to speak is because my daughter is no longer in Tewksbury But I didn't move here to put her in a private school, but after what went on last year, I had to move her to a private Christian school that I felt was going to respect her God-given right of free will and the freedom as an American that's promised by the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. Last weekend, we were at a birthday party in a backyard 100 degrees, and there were a couple of parents, and they were at mass. There were fewer than 10 adults. It was four acres of land, and I didn't realize I knew them until they said hello. The conversation immediately turned to the upcoming vote for masks as their son ran around maskless, playing with kids and jumping in a bouncy house. I immediately realized this sweet couple was posing a threat to my child's freedom to breathe freely, while at first, it seemed ridiculous to me that they were outside in 100-degree heat and sad that they were out there so scared of an illness that is not as dangerous as we all first feared. Then I felt bad that perhaps they are high-risk, but they made the choice that day to come to the party despite the perceived risk. They made the choice to take the mask off their son. They could have stayed home or kept him masked. That was their choice, and I respected it. Please respect mine. My child is a sweetheart. She is not a threat to your child. Children are not the super-spreaders we feared, and though they are our most vulnerable population, they are not high-risk. One day, I hope that my child is the one that shares a smile with theirs when they're having a bad day, or that they can share smiles and build a friendship over giggles, laughter, and silly faces. They're more likely to have a head injury, but we're not sending them to school in helmets.
Ma'am, you have 10 seconds, please.
Don't put your fear on my child. Do you want this responsibility, school board? Where are you going to draw the line on what you decide for my child? What happened to free will for our God-given basic freedoms that this great country is built on? Please give us a choice.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lastly, a molecular biologist spoke and said the masks couldn't stop anything. The masks do stop something. They stop smiles, emotion, expression. They stop new friendships. They stop bonding with teachers, and they stop their kids, the freedom of our kids to grow up as kids. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jonah McCrery, 2A Sharon Street. So I'm not going to give you a lot of statistics or anything like that. My wife is the doctor in our family. All I'll say is, the reason we've been able to enjoy the summer that we've had this year, and the reason we've been able to enjoy ourselves as a community, is because we followed the science behind the masks, the science behind the social distancing, and that is the reason why we, as a community, have been able to enjoy ourselves and why Massachusetts currently is at a better spot than some of our southern neighbors. I trust the science. I trust the expert opinions of people smarter than myself. So we have a vaccine. It works amazingly. And yes, I agree that parents should make choices for their kids. The parental choice is the reason why Tewksbury has the lowest vaccination rate of any 12-18-year-olds in our area, is because parents are choosing to ignore a vaccine that currently works. Is the mask perfect? It is not. Masks will not prevent 100% of COVID infections, but they do help. I don't want my kid to lose the choice to go to school because a parent exercised their choice to send a COVID-positive kid into their school. That's currently what has happened in Nevada, and 80 kids are now quarantined and isolated because of that. Florida has 10,000 people isolating because parents are sending COVID-positive kids to schools. That is a choice parents are going to make. Parents could choose to allow their child to bring a loaded firearm to school. Is that an example that is highly extreme and unlikely? Absolutely. But we have rules, we have policies in place to ensure that it doesn't happen and to make sure that the appropriate steps are followed when it does. Nobody is saying that kids need to be masked forever. We are simply asking that masks are in place until, at what time, a vaccine is available for those who can take it and in a place where kids can come and learn and be happy by themselves without having to worry about masks, without having to worry about social distancing, but we're not there yet, and that's why we need a mask mandate currently in the schools, because we're not there. Nobody wants their kids to be in a mask. I don't want my son to be in a mask. I hate it. I despise it. I don't want to wear this one. I do so because people choose not to get vaccinated. People choose to spread misinformation. People choose to make decisions for themselves, assuming that it only affects them and not realizing that they are part of a community, and they need to make choices for others who maybe can't do so. So that is why I would just ask that you at least examine the science, examine the experts, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, the NIH, all of these places who are recommending mask mandates until vaccines are available for their children. That's all that I ask, is that you just examine the science and you just take the time to realize that, yes, choice is important, and choice for parents is a very, very important thing that we need to maintain, but your choices don't exist in a vacuum. Our choices don't exist in a vacuum, and we need to make sure that the choices we make, while they might be difficult in the moment, are choices that will make sure that our community can continue to enjoy the level of freedom and the level of independence that we got to enjoy this summer because we followed the science, we followed the mandates last year. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Keep your comments to yourself. I didn't say anything when you spoke. Yeah, call me a communist. I'm going to call you out.
Excuse me. Guys, guys, please.
Thank you. Mark Toderisi, 390 Kendall Road.
Good evening.
Lots of great comments and passionate speeches from folks there. Gave the committee a lot to think about. I actually have a different topic for you. I want to thank committee members and fellow citizens. I also want to thank our fantastic law enforcement officers and other Tewksbury workers that are working tonight as well. So I want to address the agenda item that deals with Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Committee and what they may discuss in their meetings. This is in respect to another current topic that Tewksbury parents may soon need to confront. That topic is Critical Race Theory, CRT. I want to state publicly my position that CRT is a divisive, wrong-headed doctrine and does not comport with Tewksbury community standards. The National Education Association, NEA, is the largest teachers' union in the United States, is advocating for CRT to be taught in all 14,000-plus school districts in the United States. The NEA has recently proposed resolutions which, among other things, will conduct training that will educate members on tools and resources needed to teach CRT. It will commit their union president, Becky Pringle, to make public statements across all lines of media that support Critical Race Theory. For these items, they've put aside approximately $130,000. In addition, they've voted to conduct opposition research on groups that oppose the use of Critical Race Theory in school curricula. They've budgeted another $56,500 for that endeavor. We have a teachers' union whose mission ostensibly is to work for their members' workplace benefits and salaries that is now becoming a de facto political activism entity that's using their members' dues to push an agenda. Tewksbury currently uses the mask framework for its curriculum guideline. If Mass, a blue state, moves to add CRT to its framework, the board, the DIE committee, and Tewksbury residents and parents need to push back against CRT being taught in the Tewksbury school system. Thank you.
Great. With that, we are going to officially close Citizens Forum, and I'm going to turn it over to our clerk, Mrs. Garabedian, for our approval of minutes.
Sergeant?
Take your time.
So I make a motion to approve our minutes from Wednesday, July 21, 2021, regular school meeting meeting.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the July 21, 2021, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous vote. I'd also like to turn it over to Mrs. Garabedian for payroll and submission of bills, please.
Okay, so I move the school department payroll for the period ending 7/22/2021 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,203,379.43.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending July 22, 2021, and the amount of $1,203,379.43. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
I move the school department payroll for the period ending 8/5/2021 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,275,789.05.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period... I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending August 5, 2021, in the amount of $1,275,789.01. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. This time, I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Malone, for his superintendent report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple budgetary notes. We received approval for SIR-2 grant funding for the upcoming year. As you know, we had SIR-1 funding approved from last year, and other grants specific to COVID relief. So, we're happy to see that those grant fund pieces have come through. On the opposite end of the spectrum, we received our Title I budgetary allocation amounts. When I've reported on this annually, this has to do with economically disadvantaged rates within the town. We happen to be on the cusp of a criteria that causes us to kind of switch in funding. We got some very positive news over the past couple of years on Title I. For the upcoming year, it's not as much. For FY '22, that amount will be $190,051. That's down from the FY '21, which was $375,000. Again, that's federal money coming from Title I, calculated on the economically disadvantaged calculation out of the federal government. Congratulations to Mr. Bealestry and the Tewksbury Public Schools Summer Academic Recovery Program, which is a great grant-funded program that runs during the summer. Had the privilege to be part of their celebration a couple of weeks ago. Other staff members involved, Dr. Bastieri, Shelley Ryan, Kelly Welch, Brian Dejordan, Katie Clark, Carol Nevada, Natasha McFarland. Just a great job by our staff, working with our students over the summer to do some credit recovery, but also to do that in a format that pushes service learning. So, they worked very exclusively with Strongwater Farm, an element in town, and they had great experiences and collaboratively worked on a promotional initiative by Strongwater Farm. But just great work by our staff involved in that, and the students as well. And finally, just a thank you to the committee for participating in today's workshop. Our annual workshop for goal-setting and school improvement plans occurred today, and thank you for the committee's attendance, for your feedback, for your input, and certainly it's a long day, but we thank you for that. Mr. Chair, that completes my report. I don't know if there are any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Malone. I'll open it up to my colleagues. I'll start with Mrs. Demos.
None at this time.
Mrs. Garabedian?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
None at this time.
Okay. I would just like to thank you, and publicly acknowledge and thank all the staff. Certainly, the retreat is a bit of a long day. It's a workshop for us, but it's a wonderful opportunity for us to get in and see everything that the district leadership team is working on from the previous year, and working to improve our school improvement plan for the following year. So, it's absolutely wonderful to have all of those people back in the room after being on a computer last year. So, kudos to you and thanks. I know a lot of the staff stayed around tonight. Thank you for all your work, and we look forward to your continued dedication to our students in the district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll hand it over to Ms. Regan.
Thank you, Superintendent Malone. And through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also thank the parents that have decided to stay for this portion of the meeting, along with the administrative team, because we always feel this is the most exciting portion, when we get to just review some of the things that are happening in the district. Well, at our Tewksbury Memorial High School, and this is, hold on, I have a little bit of a shadow. It's hard to see my notes. Tewksbury Memorial High School held its one-to-one Chromebook Digital Learning Program Parent Orientation last week on August 12. Several parents and a couple of students attended virtually, asked some great clarifying questions on the implementation of this one-to-one Chromebook program. The presentation has been posted to our TMHS website, so any parent who may be watching tonight, and I hope you are, if you didn't get a chance to watch the orientation meeting, you can do so on the website. At this time, we've handed out over 300 devices to our high school students. There are other scheduled days for students to pick up their devices, and our freshmen will be receiving their device next week during the freshman orientation. In your packet, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, are our back-to-school principal letters, newsletters, and then video links, as some of the information went out through video. And these are the letters and links that were sent home to parents with very valuable information for getting ready for back-to-school. Again, these informational communications have been uploaded to each school's website. I'd also like to remind parents that school supplies at the varying grade levels are also recommended, I should say, and suggested school supply lists are also posted on the website. As Superintendent Malone described, for the past two days, we've been hunkered down in a full administrative retreat, which culminated in a three-hour workshop with the committee. I'm just going to give you some highlights of the retreat. This is an annual event. We get a lot of work and training done after all of the planning we do with our administrative team throughout the summer. As we have already referred to, the formation of our district goals, district improvement plan, and school improvement plans were presented to the committee, and will be published on our district website later in the week. We received an extensive Title IX final rule training for our administrative staff from one of the district's attorneys, Ms. Catherine Lyons. Extensive planning for back-to-school is obviously a topic of the retreat. Summer curriculum and professional development is still underway for back-to-school for our staff, focused on the accelerated roadmap, the pathway to an equitable recovery. And the topics that were described to the committee in the workshop were certainly around improved instruction and social-emotional learning needs of our students. Next Tuesday, August 24, and Wednesday, August 25, we'll kick off our annual mentor program training for our new teachers and mentors in the district. Currently, at this time, we have 11 new teachers. We have five teachers who are returning for a second year. They were one-year-only positions, and they've now landed themselves a second full year with the district. You should know that we, oh, I'm sorry. Let me also say we have a couple of postings still open and active at some of our schools. You should know that we have also been able to post for two COVID-support positions at each of our schools for the upcoming school year. These are one-year-only positions, and we are able to fund them through our grant dollars. At each school, we'll have a COVID school support staff member, and we'll be able to maintain a one-year-only COVID-enhanced cleaning staff member to support the school's needs in the upcoming school year. So, this is a very busy time of the year for all of us, especially the administrative team in central office and our custodial staff. You just can't imagine how hard they work with all of the programs running in our schools and trying to ready the buildings for everybody, so we thank them very much. And students and parents, we also want to remind you, for the remainder of your downtime, for the remainder of the summer break, please, we encourage you to complete your summer reading. All of that information as well can be found on our district website. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Mrs. Demos, any questions, comments?
I'm sorry. Ms. Regan, could you just clarify? When you said COVID-support staff member, did you say a cleaning, or did you say, is this going to be an academic position?
At both schools, we'll have two positions. One will be COVID-enhanced cleaning staff person. We brought in an additional person last year to help with just the variety of outdoor trash and different things, the cleaning process, the cleaning of touch surfaces.
Right.
The other support staff will be a jack-of-all-trades, if you will. This will be a person who's able to assist the principal daily in whatever area is needed, whether it's clerical, subbing in in a class, providing that support as we look to, for example, screen for a CL, things like that. So, this person will not be a particular role, but will provide that support as needed throughout the school day to the, whether it be, yeah.
It changes day-to-day, so it's going to be, yeah, a flexible individual. And I just wanted to note some congratulations to the two staff members that have retired that were in our consent agenda. I worked with both Ms. DePiero and Mrs. Abbott personally, and I know how hard they worked and dedicated so many years to our district, and it behooves us to congratulate them on their well-deserved retirement.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman.
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No questions, Mrs. Regan.
Mr. Parsons?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Business manager, Mr. Dave Libby, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of brief updates for the committee and folks watching at home. In the year of transportation, our regular yellow bus routes were posted on the school's website today. So, if you're planning on using bus transportation, you can see what we have right now scheduled for routes and approximate times for the big yellow buses when they roll, when school starts. Our van routes are in the works with our special education transportation companies. We provide them lists of students, and they do the routing for us, contact the families. We expect that would happen next week. Generally, it's the week before school, they start reaching out to the families and let them know what time to be ready for the van at their house. Also, Aspen has been updated with this information as well, so parents can check through the Aspen portal what we currently have scheduled for your child's transportation needs for the upcoming school year. And just a point of clarification, we're getting a lot of questions from folks, since this is kind of the first sort of semi-normal year for transportation, that there's no sign-up necessary. We assume everyone's going to ride the bus every year, and then kind of adjust to folks who are car riders as the year goes on. And a brief grant update, the SIR-3 grant is in progress, sorry, the grant application is in progress. One of the requirements of that grant is that we reach out to stakeholders for input on how to best use those funds. There is a reserve for learning loss that has to be met in that grant, but the rest of the funding will be taking input from stakeholders. So, you can expect to see a survey on that probably mid-September. We thought it'd be good to get the, let the school year get started, kind of get a feel for what folks think we may be lacking to help us write that grant in a way that best serves the community. That's all I have to report on tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Mrs. Demos?
No questions.
Mr. Stadman?
No questions.
Mrs. Garabedian?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions.
Just one clarification, Mr. Libby. The federal transportation, a mask mandated. I just want to be clear, I think that was brought up this evening, and I'd like to get that clarified for the record.
As of right now, we're under the impression that masks are mandated on buses as part of the overall transportation system mask mandate.
Okay. Mr. Malone, do you have something?
Mr. Chairman, masks are mandated on transportation and in nursing suites in schools. So, regardless of any determination this evening, masks are required on transportation to include school buses and school vans, and they are required for students to enter a nursing office, nursing suite.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Libby. Moving along to this evening's consent agenda. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments regarding this evening's consent agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented in our packets.
Second?
Just real quick, I just want to note that to some of the artwork that was done by the doing and heat brook, I remember just going back to school. We used to just have like a one-page, you know, way back in the 70s, I know. Just used to be one-page, black and white. Come back to school, you better have done this. Get all your art supplies. This is like very nicely done. So, kudos to everyone that, hard work done by this. But yeah, yes, I'll second, third. Sorry for lagging.
All right. I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair votes aye as well. The consent agenda is passed. Moving on to some very exciting news that Mrs. Demos, I think, has to share, from our Elementary School Building Committee project.
Elementary School Building Committee meeting was canceled last time we were going to meet, but from the previous meeting, I'd like to share that everything is on track. But the exciting new news is that we have our first scheduled field event for 9/11 here in Tewksbury. The field will be open, it'll be ready for multi-sports use. Mr. Drewin will be giving us more information as that comes along. But that is an exciting point of information that's worthwhile celebrations.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. The Tewksbury CPAC, Mr. Parsons?
On September 9, at 7:00 PM, there'll be the first parent support group meeting of the year. All are welcome and encouraged to join. This is a space for families to discuss the new school year, offer advice to each other, and in general, be a support group for each other. On September 16, there'll be a new school year kickoff business meeting, where goals will be reviewed for the year, and action plans involving communication, community engagement, and family support will be discussed. All meetings at this time can be accessed through Zoom. Information to participate can be found on the Tewksbury CPAC Facebook page, or by emailing tewksburycpac@gmail.com.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Mrs. Garabedian, the Wellness Advisory Committee?
So, the initial dates for meetings have been established, first one being September 22. Then we move on to November 10, March 23, and May 18. Those are all included in the packet.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. And finally, Mr. Stadman, Policy Subcommittee?
Unfortunately, Mr. Chair, we had to bump due to some scheduling issues. Our next Subcommittee meeting is on the docket for August 26, 2021.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. And as a reminder, we are now putting all of our Subcommittee dates on the agendas as well, so if anyone wants to partake in any of those meetings, certainly those will all be posted at Town Hall. With that, I'd like to leave it with Mr. Stadman, policies. So, I'm correct in assuming we have nothing this evening?
We have none. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Moving on to old business, summer school update. Mrs. Regan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we had a couple of updates from our audience, but I want to draw your attention to the most recent update to our document. I'd like to just highlight that 640 students thus far have attended our summer school program. Clearly, there was an appetite for engaging in enrichment and academic practice over the summer. We thank all of our parents and our students who did participate. I want to draw your attention now to the backside of this page. As we've been promising you, we would share all of the information for our back-to-school transitional and orientation programs. You can see that something is happening at every single school that welcomes our new and transitioning students that have never been to the school, certainly our remote learning academy students who may not have engaged in any of the orientation or programming that happened last school year, and then students who are new to the district. These calendar dates and the details have been posted to the multiple school sites as well, and we will, and this document was published with this packet. I'd like to just fill you in, the number for our high school freshman orientation now is up to 140 students, and then 66 who have RSVP'd for the student enrollment.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues?
No questions.
No questions.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. And now, we're going to go on to new business. Mr. Malone, for reopening of schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of recap how we got to where we are tonight in regards to this pandemic, we came out of an entire state full remote education in the spring of 2020. We began in the fall of '20 with a hybrid model. We moved forward through the school year to a full return of students in the spring of 2021 while still maintaining a remote learning academy, all along following DESE This summer, we again followed DESE guidelines that encouraged to follow the continuous protocols that were put forth in the spring, but also identified the fact that in the fall, DESE health and safety requirements would be lifted. We proceeded this summer, which is voluntary programming. We did not require masking. We continued with our cleaning protocols and some of our other protocols. But again, we were still following DESE guidance. Now, as of July 30th, DESE guidance has been specified. The DESE guidance is to school districts. The guidance is directed towards school districts. It strongly recommends that all students in K-6, K through 6, wear masks indoors, and strongly recommends that all students, grade 7 through 12, who are unvaccinated, wear masks Other pieces of information, as I previously stated, masks are required on all school transportation. Masks are required in all school nursing suites or nursing offices. CDC guidance specifically asks that everyone who is indoors, regardless of vaccination status, wear a mask. American Academy of Pediatrics recommends universal masking. Tewksbury Board of Health, which met this evening in an emergency meeting, voted to recommend in a three-to-two vote to the school committee that they not require masks. As part of a larger survey, we put in survey questions to parents and staff regarding masking. We had approximately 1,700 parents respond to the survey. Again, we were looking for input and feedback. Approximately 44% of the parents chose no mask. 18.1% chose that unvaccinated students only wear masks. And 37.1% said masking should be universal for all students. In our staff survey, again, not scientific, just looking for feedback, 16.6% preferred no mask requirement. 44.2% preferred unvaccinated individuals to wear masks, and 39.2% preferred all individuals to wear masks, again, indoors. We received, myself personally, and I think the committee as a whole, multiple emails, feedback, pieces of data, news stories, other pieces that people have collected as evidence, and certainly, all of that has been taken into consideration. Currently, per the town manager, the current number of positive cases in Tewksbury is 46. That is up 39 from the previous data point. Currently, right now, as of today, the daily incident rate, not as of today, but on June 11th, the daily incident rate was 0.7 in Tewksbury. As of August 13th, it is 5.8%. Vaccine rates among student-aged individuals, individuals to the ages 12 and 15 in the town of Tewksbury, currently 48% of that demographic has at least one shot of the vaccine in them, and 40% are fully vaccinated. In the age group of 16 to 9 in Tewksbury residents, these are Tewksbury residents, and these might not necessarily all be Tewksbury public school students, it's age demographic in the town. Currently, age demographic 16 to 19, 71% of that population has at least one shot of the vaccine. 62% is fully vaccinated. Superintendent, I reached out to our nursing staff to look at a recommendation from them. They discussed it as a group and deferred to the district's physician, Dr. Miller. Dr. Miller's opinion is that we should follow CDC guidelines. Currently, on our dashboard, we have two COVID cases specifically related to summer programming. We had upwards, some of these numbers might be double-counted, but upwards of 700 students that may have participated in one way or another in summer programming. Some other observations. I don't like masks. I find them uncomfortable. I find them restrictive. I also believe that as a school district, we should work with parents to ensure that they have as much choice as they possibly can have in their child's education. That's not always possible in public education. Unfortunately, as superintendent, my job is to return all students to in-person learning. There is no remote option from DESE moving forward. This is public education. It requires access by all. Students are required to attend school by law. How do we do this safely? I've heard some discussions about fear in this room. As superintendent, I have a fear. I have a fear of going backwards, of being in a hybrid model or a remote model. Certainly, we understand as educators the impact, the negative impact of wearing a mask on students. We know we can do a better job of teaching if students don't have to be in masks, but we have to balance that out with safety and with what's right. Certainly, as superintendent, don't want to impose any restrictions on any child or any family that would cause harm in any way. However, we also have to think about our students with health concerns, with immune deficiencies. Yes, as many parents as we have that have some very strict opinions on why we shouldn't have masks based on clear evidence, clear anecdotal evidence of their own children, we also have parents that are paralyzed by fear of this pandemic. From a workplace perspective, as superintendent, I would have a hard time telling an elementary school teacher that we're requiring them to go into a classroom with 20 some-odd individuals who may or may not be masked, who are absolutely not vaccinated, and to be in there for six and a half, seven hours a day. Yes, I am advocating for us to be cautious. We do the same when we conduct fire drills and Alice drills. Cases are on the rise. We've been through this. I hope we're smarter about it. I don't know. I don't have the answers. I'm not a medical doctor. But again, I hope we do not go backwards. As for the DESE guidance versus the CDC guidance, one concern I have is that I have no idea how we could effectively determine who is vaccinated, who is not. And the vaccination rates that I've described between grade 7 and 12, that's approximately 1,300 students of which, half of which are not vaccinated. How would we determine, and would we have to label students in some way or identify them in some way to determine who should be masked and who shouldn't be? Possibly, there's a way to do that. I'm not aware of what it is. We will have positive cases in this district. We do right now. We will continue with our enhanced cleaning protocols, using our air purifiers, our MRF-13 filters, partner with vendors to pull in COVID checks for those who want them, prioritize frequent hand washing, staying home when sick, and distancing where we can. We will also partner with vaccination clinics where feasible. And with new close-contact guidance coming out from DESE, we hope those students identified as close contacts will have less and less instances where students have to isolate at home. Mr. Chair, those are some of the factors I'm presenting. I'm not sure if it's the will of the committee to look for an actual recommendation from the superintendent. If you'd like that, I would be more than happy to do that. If the information I've provided is enough, then that's fine as well.
I'll leave it, I'll leave it to my colleagues to decide. I'll start with you, Mrs. Demos. Would you care for a recommendation?
I would, I would welcome a recommendation from the superintendent.
Mrs. Garabedian?
Sure. Whatever you're comfortable with.
Mr. Parsons?
I would welcome a recommendation.
Okay. Well, there's three right there, so.
Before I provide this recommendation...
For clarification, this is not in...
We're still going to have discussion.
Perfect. Okay.
Yep.
And before I provide this recommendation, the position this board has found itself in is completely unfair to all five of you. Completely unfair that this decision was laid down to a committee who are here to garner educational decisions when at the state level and other levels, we have medical personnel that can perfectly make this decision one way or another. So to put this down to a school committee is completely unfair, and I hope, no matter what side of this argument, or maybe argument's not the right word here for it, but whatever position you take on this, please understand that the five individuals here did not ask for this responsibility. This was thrust upon them. As far as a recommendation, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I would recommend that we continue to follow DESE guidance to include requiring masks on students who are not eligible for vaccination or have not received vaccination.
That's not DESE.
Excuse me, sir. Without a realistic way to determine or enforce, grade 7 through 12, non-vaccinated-only wearing masks, I recommend that all students and staff wear masks, regardless of vaccine I recommend that we do this for prescribed period of time. My thought is in the area of 60 days, where we can thoroughly understand the impact of a full return to school, of in-person learning during this current status of this pandemic, or at which time where we can determine that we're at an appropriate level of vaccination, both for adults and students, that may impact that. Mr. Chair, this is not an easy decision. Certainly here to support the committee in any way that I can, but I feel that as superintendent, we need to operate in a safe manner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you for your input. I'd like to open it up now to my colleagues, and we're going to start with the vice chair, Mrs. Demos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I first want to say thank you to all who have emailed and have personally called to share your thoughts on this topic. Please know I've read and reflected upon all of them in the articles that have been shared. I have done my due diligence in this regard to the research on this subject. As a public school district, I believe that we are delegated to provide a safe learning environment for all. But next year, per DESI, we have no remote options to provide to our students. I believe we need to be proactive in our decision-making. My priority is to keep the schools open and safe for all. In-person learning, I wish to see students working collaboratively with their peers, with built-in mask breaks, outdoor learning opportunities, and time to be with their teachers in person. I fear that we will go backwards and have to repeat what we did last year. I do not want to, I do not want to see a repeat of last year and the loss of learning that these students have endured. I would personally recommend mask-wearing for the first quarter of our school year, then reassess at that time. We do not want to go backwards after coming so far in this process. That is my opinion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll go to our clerk, Mrs. Garabedian.
So I actually just have a question for Mr. Malone.
Sure.
I have a bunch of questions, but I'll start with this. Could you define the difference between when the school has a recommendation, just the kind of difference?
So right now, the DESE guidance, as identified by the commissioner, is a recommendation to school districts. It's not a specific recommendation to communities or parents or anything of that nature. It's a recommendation to districts. It's poorly written. Maybe it's poorly written on purpose. I don't know. It's poorly written.
Can you read it?
Surely.
Can you just point out that...
Ma'am, could I, just could you please be quiet? We're going to get through this. Mr. Malone, could you please, please stay there? I think our clerk might have a few more questions.
He's, he's going to read it.
Excuse me?
I'm very close, but I can't hear you. Do you mind if I...
This is not working in here.
Yeah. The power loss.
Do you have more, Mrs. Garabedian?
I thought you were reading. Sorry. That was one question.
Can you share your recommendation?
I guess that's it. Thank you. Just the clarification.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to read this? Mr. Chair, would you like me to read the specific guidance from DESE?
Sure.
Specific to masking, this fall, DESE and DPH strongly recommend that all students in kindergarten through grade six wear masks when indoors, except students who cannot do so due to medical conditions or behavioral needs. Masks are not necessarily, not necessary outdoors and may be removed while eating indoors. DESE and DPH also strongly recommend that vaccinated staff in all grades, unvaccinated students, excuse me, unvaccinated staff in all grades, unvaccinated students in grades seven and above, and unvaccinated visitors wear masks indoors in alignment with statewide advisory on masking.
Thank you. Mr. Stadman?
So, again, I just want to reiterate what, you know, Ms. Demos had mentioned. You know, thank, thanks each to every one of you that's reached out to, you know, myself via email or phone call. I've read each and every one of them. You know, this is a, this is a crappy situation to be in. I mean, you know, Mr. Malone mentioned it. I'm not a, I'm not a medical person. I'm a degree engineer. I, I don't know anything about medicine. What do people do when they, they don't know anything about it? They go to Google. They, they go to YouTube. What's that? And, and, you know, you can go down these rabbit holes and you can find, you, this way, you can find that way, and, and, and again, you can find the pros and you can find the cons, and the, the one thing that, there's certain things that, one thing that you learn as a, as an engineer, you've got to be skeptical of certain things that, you know, there's left and there's right and center and things like that. You know, you can get tracked in different directions, but, you know, as Ms. Demos had mentioned and Mr. Malone has mentioned as well, we don't want to slide backwards. And, you know, these numbers, you know, they're, they're going up and they're sliding backwards and they're sliding all around.
Zero.
Sir, I'm not here to argue.
Thank you.
So again, again, I look at, I look at John Hopkins, I look at just basic data. So I'm going to go with a more hybrid approach. You know, I can, I can go with, Mr. Malone's a 60er, I can go with Ms. Demos, we can reevaluate on a, on a monthly basis. You know, we can reevaluate to that extent. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Malone for the facilitation, input, and moderation of that discussion. Just as all you in the audience probably don't want to be in our seats for this meeting, I certainly don't want to be in Mr. Sullivan or Mr. Malone's. So thank you both for all that you're doing during this meeting. This is an unbelievably difficult decision. I just want to acknowledge again, my colleagues and I aren't experts, and at least myself are not the most qualified people to make a decision like this. But it was handed down to us, and we have to, so we will. I also want to say something that's on a lot of minds in the audience and definitely my own. This is scary, and I have a lot of fear being in this seat, not necessarily the, I need a police detail fear, but fear knowing whoever decision is made, families and their children are not going to be supported in the way they and their student need to be in order to be physically and socially well and be successful in their academics. I am here because I want to improve our schools for all students, and it's really difficult to grapple with the fact that regardless of this decision, I won't be doing that. I'll support the recommendation of Superintendent Malone, but...
That's a joke.
I have a very real concern that I have no information on how we're going to support these students who will not be attending school in person.
All of ours, or we'll come without a mask, and you guys can deal with that.
We will not comply.
You guys can deal with that when it comes up.
Excuse me, could I please ask? I think we've sat patiently and listened to everyone. We have given everyone that courtesy and respect. We're just looking for it in return, that's all.
All right, it's over then. We can go now.
Right? Three to two, right?
Yeah. Why did you even afford us the time?
We will not comply.
We're not going to, I'm not, I'm not going to engage you. Mr. Parsons, are you done, sir? If you want, you take all the time you need.
We realize that this choice should not be yours. That's why you should not choose and let us choose.
Mr. Foster.
Yes!
You don't have to make a decision.
Mr. Foster.
You don't have to decide that my child...
Mr. Foster.
You guys are responsible for the decisions made. Our kids will suffer. All the times we make a fresh decision, that gets them...
Would you kindly make a motion to take a five-minute recess?
Mr. Chair, I take, I make a motion for a five-minute recess.
A second? I have a motion. I have a motion. I have a motion in a second on the floor to take a five-minute recess. Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian? Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. The meeting will resume in five minutes. The meeting will resume in five minutes. Thank you.[1020.23]
Thank you. I'd like to reconvene the meeting at 8:52. Sorry, it took a few minutes longer than anticipated. Mr. Parsons, I'm not sure if you had completed your remarks, sir. Do you have any left to add?
I do.
Please proceed. Thank you.
So, I just want to urge the committee and staff that we better prepare to support the students and families who are going to have their education interrupted by this decision, and to do so as fast as possible. That's all I have for comments.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Garabedian?
So, I have a couple of formality things I'd like to say first. You know, we received a tremendous amount of email regarding this, so I want to thank every person in the community that reached out, everybody that spoke at the podium over the past few months at our meetings. I've seen a lot of new faces, and the parents and the community members, you know, with personal concerns in sharing them, it's greatly appreciated. I hope every member of our school community feels that their voice is heard, is respected, and valued, because it is. Personally, as a resident of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I can resonate what Mr. Malone is saying. I have three children in public school, and I'm very disappointed that this decision lays with local school boards. I would like to show my appreciation to the Tewksbury Board of Health for having their meeting tonight to advise us. This was an unplanned meeting. As outlined by Desi, we're asked to make our decisions in consultation with local health authorities, so my respect and appreciation to our local Board of Health. I'd like to thank Mr. Malone tonight for putting together this comprehensive presentation. Number one is my, that's on my mind, as it is for everybody, is prioritizing the safety of our students and staff. I commend everybody that worked so hard in the district last year to assure that this goal was achieved. My hope is that our district will be equally and as efficient this year with vaccination rates rising. I'm also hopeful that our community will not only be affected by new variants of COVID, that will not be as affected by new variants of COVID, and that should our district have the opportunity to offer vaccination clinics, I'd like for us to participate. The next thing on my mind is assuring that students come back to school with interest to cultivate their love of learning and that their excitement for school is interminable. I wish for our schools to remain open, full, and in-person. We heard today in the workshop with administration and school leadership some really exciting things regarding district goals for advancing and augmenting the social-emotional learning measures in our schools. I'm really excited about this. They shared priorities and direction to ensure that the growth and development of our social-emotional learning will be a top consideration in the student's daily experience. I am hopeful that with or without masks, our district exceeds expectations for our kids in this area. I respect the recommendations from Desi, MassDPH, AAP, and the CDC, all having one thing in common: We should return to school with masks in some form. With regard to all that we've heard tonight, countless emails we've received, the information I've been reviewing relative to our community, my vote is in alignment with Desi, the Department of Education, that we return to school with, at minimum, masks for unvaccinated students and staff.
Vaccination?
Hell, yeah!
Welcome, Dave.
Tewksbury is in a great place with regard to our numbers. I'd like for whatever we decide to be reevaluated in 30 days after the start of school, and I think that's a fair thing to ask. Thank you for your time.
Great. 30 days? I'm pretty sure no one up here is thinking that far down the road. I can assure you of that, being a second-termer up here. We're up here because we care about our community. So, with that being said, with that being said, I don't happen to agree with the position of a lot of my colleagues. I don't happen to believe that we have to start with a presumption that it's not safe. I've listened to a lot. I've learned a lot. I'm here to talk about a little bit of the people's rights, opposed to what the people think is right, which is a lot of what we heard in here tonight: opinions, statistics, things that aren't so much rooted in fact. I think most people would be surprised that the U.S. Constitution didn't contain the original U.S. Constitution, the Bill of Rights. It was only added as they tried to ratify it as a response to the states because it did not specifically guarantee enough individual rights. Rights, by the way, which are enhanced in our own Massachusetts Declaration of Rights and Constitution, which predates our United States Constitution. We were all sitting in here tonight, thankfully, for these rights, exercising some of them. Maybe not so at other times. Our ability to have free and fair and frequent elections, our ability to express our First Amendment right, our opinions, our right to our speech, the rights that the press will probably put this on TV and newspaper tomorrow, our right to assemble peacefully, which I quite honestly am very disappointed as someone that's lived 50 years, 50 years in this town, to see what happened just a short time ago, when people lose their heads. This is an emotional argument. Absolutely not. It's one that I'm going to make rooted in our rights, people's rights, not opinions, not speculation, not fears, not emotion. Most important of some of these other rights is the right to govern ourself, our right to air out our grievances against our government, and most importantly, our right to be free and secure, not only in our person, our house, but our papers and our effects. And I believe, yes, mask mandates rooted in whether or not someone is willing to get a vaccination, I believe is not only wrong, but an infringement upon these rights, both as students and as families. Those decisions, in my opinion, rest solely with a student or their family. As noted by a lot of people tonight, neither the governor, lieutenant governor, our state legislature, our Department of Public Health, the CDC, the APA, has required masks for school districts. Instead, they have merely recommended, very actively, that they believe that now the five of us should require masks of students and families. Additionally, when they got pushback, when it was originally recommended, my apologies, they pushed to being strongly recommended. With all due respect to all the recommendations in the world, I'm here to represent the will of the people of this community, which I wholeheartedly believe most people not only do not want their children to wear a mask, but they also are very scared of the erosion of the civil liberties that they feel are being taken upon us, whether it's a mask or a vaccine next, or where that's going to start. I believe my colleagues and I have probably seen almost every study, opinion piece, op-ed, recommendation, videos, tutorials, YouTube, someone played tonight, medical clips, Fauci clips, and I can only imagine that the governor hears well. From what I have seen, there really doesn't seem to be any compelling scientific medical facts or data, either one way or the other, supporting even wearing a mask or not. So if we've been going through the summer, why not start in that position and go from there? I disagree with my colleagues to that point. Could please ask for, thank you. Okay, U.S. vaccination in Massachusetts is second, and the impact on COVID in our school-aged kids is very low. I personally do not believe that we should take any action other than passing along the many recommendations that have come to us and let students and families make the decision that they believe as is best for them, as I believe it is their right. Our children have already lost enough through this pandemic, and the longer we put these masks on, the longer it will not end. And if the data shows in the interim that we do need to make adjustments, or we do need to pivot, if we don't lay a policy and we don't lay a mandate, we allow the superintendent of schools and the school committee to make those changes when necessary. Thank you. And so, what's always the pleasure of the board? Would we like to have further discussion, or?
Going for your month, or you're going for his?
You go.
Going for the month, or you going for his?
He does fine.
You want me? 60 days or a month?
So, Mr. Chair.
Asking for a choice. We're just asking for a choice. Please.
Mr. Chair, I feel as though we have all shared our thoughts, and I defer to you for the next steps.
Okay, wonderful. I'd like to make a motion that we allow students and families in the town of Tewksbury to make their own determination of whether or not they should send their school-aged children. Can I please finish, and I'll ask, if we can't be quiet, I really don't want to do this. Please allow us to do our business. It's the last time I'm going to ask, and allow our students to attend Tewksbury Public Schools starting this fall that way. Additionally, that we do not put a mask mandate in policy. That is my motion. Do I have any seconds? Seeing none? What is the will of the board at this time?
Mr. Chair, I'd make the recommendation as put forth by Superintendent Malone.
Second? Can I, Mr. Malone, could we just have you read that? I'm sorry, sir, for the record, unless, John, you have it.
I do not.
Certainly, I can refer to my recommendation. I'd leave it up to the board to make any motions.
Yep. Well, we have a motion in a second on the floor.
Right. My recommendation was, was to follow DESE guidance.
Your days, was it 60 days?
60 days is what I had recommended, but that also, different from DESE guidance, with an inability to track, decide, determine who's vaccinated and who's not in grade seven to 12, that all students and staff be required to wear masks.
With the ability to extend, in addition to, would that be an extension as well? To, I'm sorry, yeah. Also put forth, in addition to extend, stead mask policy?
Are you looking for a time period or for?
Right, if you've got 60 days already on the floor.
I think you just, my sense would be to look at a 60-day timeframe so that we can determine the impact of the trajectory of this pandemic on our students and a full return to schooling, look at the impact of vaccination rates, and look at the situation again in 60 days.
Right, so in 60 days, you'd be looking for another motion on the school committee's floor?
To either continue on that pace or to change it.
Or to just continue.
Okay. Let's simplify that motion, Mr. Stadman, if we can. I'll take a crack at it. Okay. So, just so we're clear, I don't want to put words in your mouth. Your motion is that all students and staff must wear masks for the first 60 days of the reopening of school, and we'll look at it again as a school committee in 60 days?
That sound good to you, Mr. Malone?
To, so that we can.
Based on your recommendation?
But I'm not sure. We don't need to know why we're looking. The motion is just.
No, based on your recommendation earlier.
Based on my recommendation, I think that follows along that.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second. I am going to take a roll call vote on this. Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, vote no. Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Can you repeat the motion again?
The motion is that all students and staff must wear masks for the first 60 days of schools, at which point the school committee will relook at it at that time.
For clarification, that is regardless of vaccination?
Yes, correct, Mr. Malone. Regardless of vaccination?
As far as wearing, it would be for everyone, correct, regardless of vaccination.
All students, yep.
Aye.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on. No, 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 you can't ask a question.
How do you, how do you?
I vote aye.
Okay, thank you.
Did I get you? All right. There it is.
Will be reevaluated in 60 days. Thank you. It will be reevaluated in 60 days. Thank you. As I stated earlier, public comment is closed. Mr. Kelly, could you, Mr. Kelly, Sergeant Kelly, could you please ask the people very kindly that are now disrupting the meeting if they would kindly leave? Thank you. All right, moving on to the daily substitute pay rate adjustment. Mrs. Regan?
Yes, in front of you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school committee, the, this adjustment does require a roll call vote. We did look at the average substitute and aid pay rate in our neighboring areas. We found that the range was between $80 and $100 a day. The changes below is what we feel can establish a more competitive daily rate with the goal of obtaining the number of high-quality substitutes needed in the upcoming school year. As I said, this will require a roll call vote. I had Mr. Libby do an analysis of approximately what that increase may be. Given last year and the year before, we're looking at potentially a $40,000 to $50,000 increase for the one year based on previous substitute daily needs. I also would like to say this is grant-funded. The increase in our substitute rate would be grant-funded.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Regan. Any questions from my colleagues?
No, I just have a comment, and I'm excited about this, and thank you for looking at this, because I, that was a lot of feedback, I think, that we got last year, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I might add, too, you might notice down in the pink section there, we value our retired Tewksbury teachers. We've always given a little differential for Tewksbury retired teachers that substitute day-to-day because they know our district, they know, usually they go back to even the school that they had once taught in, and they're of great value to us. You can see there's an incentive there to get our retired teachers to do daily subbing for us.
Great, thank you. And I also wanted to just comment. Thank you. I know we had a difficult time getting subs the last, you know, couple of years, and honestly, I think this will help us be a lot more competitive in the marketplace, so thank you for taking this on. With that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the new daily substitute pay rate changes.
I'll make a motion to accept the 21, 22 daily substitute pay rate adjustments.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the 2021, 2022 daily substitute pay rates. Requires a roll call vote. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mrs. Regan.
Thank you.
This Tewksbury Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, I'm not sure we'll take this up tonight. I did want to get it on the agenda. The town of Tewksbury Selectman's office has created a town-wide Tewksbury Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. There is a seat if someone would like to sit on it from the school committee. We also have Ms. Karen Baker O'Brien, who is participating, who, quite honestly, I think will be excellent. It'll be a lot easier for them, in my opinion, to get exactly what we're doing in the schools from someone that's doing the work, so I think what we're going to do is just get that information from the town manager, and maybe, Mr. Malone, if we could reach out, maybe tomorrow or the next day, and I'll share that information with my colleagues and see if anyone has any interest in doing that, and if we do, we can discuss it at the next meeting and possibly appoint a representative, so. With that, we're moving on to, we've received two open-meeting law complaint violations alleged. I'm going to take the 729 allegation first. Just a little background, we are in receipt of an open-meeting law complaint dated July 29, 2021. I have disseminated the complaint to the members of the school committee as required by law. The law also requires the school committee to meet to review the complaint within 14 business days. This evening, we are meeting to review the complaint. The public body must respond to the complaint in writing and must send the complainant a response and a description of any action taken by the public body to address the allegations in the complaint. At the same time, the body must send the Attorney General a copy of the complaint and a copy of the response. The public body may delegate this responsibility to an individual member of the public body, its counsel, or a staff member, but only after the public body has met to review the complaint. Before we move to a discussion, I would like to turn the discussion over to Mr. Malone, since the complaint references previous communications between the complainant and the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll provide the committee with a brief background information regarding the complaint. However, I'm not comfortable going into specifics because the background involves student information that school districts cannot discuss publicly without express written consent from the parent. I would just say that in regards to the individual who wrote the complaint, did not contact me before the school committee meeting. Had that person done so, I would have clarified with that person that my letter referencing the complaint did not intend to exclude this person from the school committee meetings. Because of the confidential nature of the information pertinent to this complaint, my recommendation is for the school committee to delegate responsibility for recommendation is for the school committee to delegate responsibility for responding to the complaint to school committee legal counsel. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And I'll open it up. We'll start with Mrs. Demos. Any comments or questions or concerns?
I would follow that recommendation and allow the legal counsel to respond.
Thank you. Mrs. Garabedian?
I concur.
Mr. Stadman?
I'm going to go with my colleagues.
Okay, and Mr. Parsons?
I concur with my colleagues.
Okay.
Does that need a motion?
Yes, would you like to?
Can I make a motion for Superintendent Malone to, in partnership and counsel, to respond to this?
Yep.
Complaint?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to allow Superintendent Malone, in conjunction with school committee legal counsel, to respond to the complaint. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. And then we have a second complaint that was received, well, was dated on August tenth, twenty-twenty-one. I, like the other one, I have disseminated the complaint to the members of the school committee as required by law. The law also requires the school committee to meet to review the complaint within fourteen business days. This evening, we are meeting to review the complaint. The public body must respond to the complaint, complainant, in writing and must send the complainant a response and a description of any action the public body has taken to address the allegations in the complaint. At the time, the body must send the Attorney General a copy of the complaint and a copy of the response. The public body may delegate this responsibility to an individual member of the public body, its council or staff member, but only after the public body has met to review the complaint. The complaint alleges that the Tewksbury School Committee did not follow the open-meeting law with respect to timely approval of twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one executive session minutes and periodic review of such minutes for declassification. The draft minutes for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one were set for final approval in review for declassification in this evening's executive session. In response to the complaint, my recommendation is for the school committee to take the action consistent with the recommendations as follows. We should send the complainant copies of any declassified executive session minutes for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one as soon as such minutes are approved and declassified. We should review all other minutes for the last three school years and approve any that have not yet been approved and reviewed for declassification and that have not yet undergone such review. I recommend that we schedule such action for our next school committee meeting. The school committee will attend additional open-meeting law training. We can all learn from doing a better job following the specific provisions of the open-meeting law, including myself. I would actually further expand the recommendation to training to include our other subcommittee members, Superintendent Malone, School Committee Secretary Gail Johnson, and all building-based school councils, which are also subject to the open-meeting law. I would recommend that we find a date within the next two months to schedule training, which could be conducted either by the Attorney General's Office, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and/or district legal counsel. Finally, I am recommending that the committee delegate to me the responsibility to prepare, in consultation with district legal counsel, a written response to send to the complainant and Attorney General outlining this evening's school committee's response and action taken to address the allegations in the complaint. And finally, I would like to personally apologize to my colleagues, to the school district, although we were in compliance, taking the notes at the appropriate time, the minutes. The responsibility ultimately falls on my shoulders to make sure, and I apologize for putting myself and my colleagues. Certainly, I'm not perfect. We can all do better, and I just wanted to publicly say to the community that I personally have no problem doing that, and I know neither will our colleagues, so. With that, I would look for a recommendation to have the committee delegate to me the responsibility to prepare that in consultation to be sent to the complainant.
I'll make a motion for the chair of the school committee to work in conjunction with legal counsel to confer and reply to this complaint. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
A second?
I have a motion and a second to recommend that the committee delegate, the school committee chair, the responsibility to prepare, in consultation with district legal counsel, a written response to the complainant and the Attorney General. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
I would like to amend the motion to add a self-evaluation of the committee for its operations and include in that the establishment of goals to progress our operations and to revisit them on a yearly basis to measure our growth and our efficiency, as outlined in our own policies that we do that process.
Well, that's a policy issue, Mr. Parsons, the motion simply to delegate?
To, Mr. Chair, that we are all subject to our own policies.
What we have on the floor is a motion and a second to delegate the responsibility for a person to respond to the complaint. That's it. There's, if you would like some additional steps, we can certainly have conversation, but the motion is just simply to delegate the authority to who is going to respond to the complaint.
I only propose to amend the motion. We can put that to a vote and then return to the original motion. So I'll put the motion to amend the original stated motion to include a self-evaluation of school committee operations.
Okay, well, Robert's rules, we have a motion on the floor. We vote on the motion. We don't make motions to motions as a matter of procedure.
Could you?
I understand what you're looking to do, and I don't disagree with you. It's just not part of the motion that is on the floor to delegate someone to respond to the complaint, that's all.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I'll vote aye then.
Thank you. Mrs. Garabedian?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. I would like to, the motion passes unanimously. I would like to stay on the topic, Mr. Parsons, if you would like to have further discussion regarding, we'll be more than happy to allow that at this time.
Sure thing. It is in our own policies that we annually schedule a time to have a workshop to review our own operations. Given these two open-meeting law violations, in that you have two new members serving for the first time, I think it would be wise that we sit together to convene, to evaluate ourselves, and set measurable goals so that we can improve our own operations and function as a committee.
Relative to policy or relative to open-meeting law?
Relative to all functions of our committee regarding operations.
Okay, well, why don't we do this? I would suggest, when we get to future agenda items, whatever you would like for us to discuss, we'll be more than happy, we'll put it on for the next meeting, agenda item, and then we can go from there.
Well, as long as my colleagues are done not entertaining that discussion, that's fine.
All right, moving on to school committee matters of interest. We'll start with Mr. Parsons.
None at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Garabedian?
I have a couple of things to mention. The Wynn PAC had reached out. They'd like for me to promote, they have a food truck event coming up on September fifteenth. It's a Wednesday. This will be at the Wynn School for Wynn students. It's going to be held from five to seven-thirty. It's a kickoff to welcome students back to school. They'd love to see some new faces and familiar faces coming to that event. Duing is having their playground social on the thirtieth of August. The North Street School is having their playground social on the twenty-sixth of August, and the Heathbrook had a fantastic turnout yesterday, and tomorrow, Thursday, will be their playground social. So if you've never attended these, and you attend those schools, you have students at those schools, it's a fantastic, wonderful events.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. Mrs. Demos?
I'm just looking forward to our next meeting and hearing all about the reopening of the schools. I'm going in for a tour next week for all the buildings. I'm excited to see all the work that's been done this summer firsthand. I know that these, the staff members and the administration and the teachers and everyone that's been in these buildings all summer have worked really hard, and I think I'm proud to be able to take a tour into each and every one of these buildings and welcome the students back.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. And Mr. Stadman?
I'm just looking forward to tomorrow's ESBC meeting. Beyond that, got nothing for you.
Okay. And I just want to share my excitement with the vice chair with the field opening. I think the first football games on September eleventh, so certainly looking forward to that. We can't thank the community enough for supporting and endorsing that new school. Certainly, that's a big step in the right direction, getting that done, and, you know, hopefully, we can stay on time and on schedule, Mrs. Demos, to get the school done.
We are, we are heading that way.
And we'll get the kids in there happy and healthy. So with that, our future school committee meeting dates, our next official school committee meeting is September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. The following meeting will be our October fifth, twenty-twenty-one special town meeting, which is what the school committee will attend, and our regularly scheduled meeting will be October thirteenth. Our future subcommittee and advisory committee meeting dates are as scheduled. Elementary School Building, August nineteenth, September ninth, October fourteenth. Tewksbury CPAC Board Meeting, August seventeenth, September ninth. Parent Support Group in September sixteenth. Tewksbury CPAC School Safety Subcommittee, August nineteenth. The Wellness Advisory Committee, September twenty-second, and the Policy Subcommittee Meeting, August twenty-sixth. And for future agenda items, I'll start with Mr. Stadman.
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Demos?
Nothing tonight.
Mrs. Garabedian?
Nothing.
And Mr. Parsons?
None at this time.
With that, Mrs. Demos?
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second?
I have a motion and a second to adjourn Wednesday, August eighteenth, school committee meeting. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.